We all agree tonight, all of the speakers have agreed that America has a very serious problem. Not only does America have a very serious problem, but our people have a very serious problem. America's problem is-
Self-destruction, and it was self-destruction. Self-destruction, and it was self-destruction.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dwight O'Donnell Davis. And I'm the president of the Motivational Center located in West Center City Wilmington, serving all Wilmington and the state of Delaware. I just came from a very, very exciting health fair down in the West Center City neighborhood at the Helen Chambers Park. It was quite successful in a beautiful day out. I wanted to just very briefly speak about a couple of upcoming events. One in particular has to do with my involvement with the American Beauty Academy. And the American Beauty Academy has been working in conjunction with the city of Wilmington and the state of Delaware to establish a cosmetology hybrid program. There are a number of individuals who have been attempting to obtain license for barbering and cosmetology that for one reason or the other were unable to complete their studies and pass their tests. This Monday in Dover, we will be making a formal presentation to the State Board of Cosmetology and Barbering for our new hybrid program initiative. And essentially, this initiative is a 200-hour, 400-hour, and/or 600-hour depending upon what you need to do to be able to qualify and pass the test. In addition to that, State Representative Stephanie T. Bolden is having a free breakfast down at Evelyn's Restaurant, and that's this Monday also at 9:00 a.m. And according to the letter, the breakfast is for those who own shops, barber shops and hair salons, because what we're trying to do is to increase the number of apprenticeships that's allowable for each licensed barber and/or cosmetologist. That whole industry of cosmetology is something that is presenting itself as an opportunity for individuals to go into business for themselves. I had the opportunity to speak at the fourth graduation of the American Beauty Academy. Also, the mayor made a presentation as well, and we thank him for providing the Nemour Theater for us to have this graduation. And we graduated a little over 40 individuals. So if you're into barbering or cosmetology, you dropped at a school for whatever reason, where you can attend the free breakfast by State Representative Stephanie T. Bolden and/or if you know anyone in the Dover area, you can come and hear us make our presentation to the State Board of Cosmetology and Barbering. It's a very, very exciting opportunities presenting themselves for individuals in this field. And I just want to end up by saying that if you haven't been down to the Clifford Brown Jazz Festival, come on down, because I was there last night, and it was a wonderful, wonderful presentation, wonderful performance. And when I finish here, I'm on my way down there tonight. So thank you very much, and God bless.
Brother.
Yes, I'd like to make a few announcements. This Sunday, the Unity March is going to take place on the west side at 2:00. People are going to gather at 4th and Jackson Street. And this is a continuation of an event that has started with the door-to-door outreach ministry in the Judy Johnson Park area on the west side, which began this week from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're knocking on doors, talking to residents, seeing, you know, what services people might need and anything that we can do to help the group that's putting this together. It's Impacto, Christian Impact Ministry, and the foundation, Luz Divina, and together with a lot of different ministers, churches, community leaders, government leaders, they have come together for this musical festival in one community under God. So it kicks off Sunday, the events at Judy Johnson Park with the march at 2:00 up to Judy Johnson Park. Well, there will be a free concert immediately after the march. And from there on, the rest of the week, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., there will be concerts in Judy Johnson Park every evening. There will be all different types of music. There will be gospel. There will be ministers from the non-Hispanic sector working together with the Hispanic sector. There will be Christian rap. There will be, you know, dance music. So it's going to be very current and very entertaining and just getting people together in an area of our city that could use some positive energy. So we do ask everyone to please join in. Anybody wants to have a table, have information, to please join us. Also want to mention that the Christina Culture Arts Center is doing their E-CAP preschool open enrollment until July 31st, and space is limited. Children must be four years old by August 31st. For more information or for an application, you can call 302-652-0101. Also, on behalf of the William Hicks Anderson staff and Ms. Mercedes, we would like to say a big thank you to everyone who came out to the event this afternoon, which I will let Councilman Jacocha speak further on. But it was a great event to be out there with the art walk and the health fair. And he will discuss the details, but I would say thank you on their behalf.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. First and foremost, as I always do, let me take this opportunity to honor the God who I always say is the head of my life. Or had it not been put at all to my side, I don't know where I would be. Having said that, Mr. President, Councilwoman Walsh, I do apologize. I sincerely apologize. The God in me, I was being facetious. And so please accept my apologies when I disrupted the floor and called you my school teacher. So please, I was being sarcastic and accept my apologies. No comments from me, Ms. Walsh, just accept my apologies. Know that I, when I'm wrong, I like to say I'm wrong. So I was being sarcastic. And to the council members on the floor, please forgive me for my outbursts at that point and taking a pot shot of some sort at one of our colleagues. That is not me. I take pot shots when you know I'm taking them. I raise my hand and say it came from me. But I sincerely hope that you accept my apologies for that outburst. Having said that, Mr. President, I want to thank the Wilmington Police Department and the vice unit, as I said when we were introducing the bill, to move them of the wonderful, wonderful job that they're doing in terms of even with the manpower they have, of which we can give them more, and they can do more. But they are really making an impact with the taking drug dealers, major drug dealers, 10, 10 with the corporation of other agencies. And it shows you with corporation of other agencies what really can get done. You can read the papers tonight, or read it online, or read it tomorrow morning, and you'll see that there was a major, major operation that was done with the corporation of feds and local and state law enforcement. So I take my hat off to them. I take my hat off to the patrol unit, because now you see them more walking. I just left over the walking around with Captain Brown is in charge and Captain Smith in charge of the vice unit. I just left West Center City. And I just, while the nonpetition was going on, I tried to whisper to the chief of staff and even though about what took place or what I knew that took place over there this afternoon, even though Ms. Cabrera was very nice, saying it was a lovely event, it turned out nice, because folks worked through the stupidness, the stupid stuff. They worked through the stupid stuff. It's not very often that I sit here and call for people jobs. But I'm thinking right now that the director of Parks and Recreation has a lot to explain. And if he can't get his act together, I've already said to the chief of staff that every time I get on this floor and open my mouth for the next four years until I leave here, I will be calling for his job. He is one arrogant, in my opinion, in my opinion. He's arrogant. He doesn't return phone calls. He's a bully to the employees from what I hear. He doesn't return phone calls. I know this because I made several myself. We've had conversations about this individual. Us as council, y'all can sit there and not want to say anything, but you have constituents, just like I've been hearing from those constituents, how nonchalant and irresponsive he is when they make phone calls and requests of him. That was a city, co-city sponsored event at Hicks Anderson. You don't have to fill out an application to use your own park. You shouldn't have to fill out an application to walk across the street into Helen Chambers Park when it's a co-sponsored city event. You don't have to. All you got to do is make the request and police officers will be there. You don't have to. All you got to do is make a request and send the things that you want in kind, and they'll be there. You don't have to. But yet still, this director closed his eyes and turned his back to about 150 folks out there, different agencies from around the city and the county, who came and was willing to participate in a community that sometimes seems well-forgotten. And he himself, Mr. President and council members, he himself used to be the director over there, just like I was, and hopefully soon to go back to me. But he himself was a director over there, and he know that if the city has anything to do with anything over there, they are a partner in it. And for him to have those kids out there and making them, and no grills to cook food on when all that food was there, and they had to go in the inside William Hicks Anderson Center to cook the food, folks started being angry and they were mad and people upset. There were six council members there. You is one of them, Mr. President. Councilwoman Sabas, Councilwoman Walker, Councilwoman Cabrera, myself, Councilwoman Wright. We were there with Councilman Namdi, who invited us to come, look at the artwork and participate and be a participant. So I look over here at you, Mr. Chief of Staff, let him keep that mess up. And every time I open my mouth, I'm going to be saying, fire the stupid self. He is arrogant. He works for the people, and that's why y'all put him there. He don't return phone calls. He's arrogant. And so I'm not going to get my blood pressure up because I took my pill. I took my pill for my blood pressure. But I had to say what I had to say because I meant what I said. Now, having said that, Mr. President, having said that, I like to thank all of you for the hard work you do as council people. I like this council. I really do. I've never said that in my 10, 11 years, maybe because it's my last term, but I like this council. And I'm making myself a bucket list, a bucket list of things and people I don't like. So when I get ready to leave out of here, off council, I can tell them face-to-face off that bucket list. Ain't no need to meet sugarcoat nothing else. We want to be friends with this administration. We want to be friends with every department head. We want to be able to be helpful, but you're not going to treat us like stepchild. I won't be disrespected. So having said that, Mr. President, Sunday is my birthday. I'm going to celebrate in the name of the Lord, and I just want to say thank you all and have a nice and safe weekend. God bless. Nothing else, Mr. President.
Mr. Darius Brown is there also. I'll save my comments for later. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a tough act to follow there. I think I'm going to probably go in reverse order now, because I've got some pretty positive things that have come out of Parks and Rec. I'm going to have a Movies Under the Stars night. I'm going to put on a little Movies Under the Stars for my constituents. The first one's going to be on June 28th. That's a Friday night, 600 block of South Bancroft. Going to put up a 25-foot movie screen, and we're going to play a family-friendly movie. Yes, the permits were filled out. Yes, the requests were made and they were granted. August 24th, I'll do another one. That'll be at Father Tucker Park. Same scenario, bring your blankets, bring your kids, come on out, let's have a good time. Still working on the refreshment side, and should be a good night. I want to thank Parks and Rec. I asked for them to come out and clean up Bancroft Parkway. There's a distinguished guest that's coming to do a survey of the land. It's a gentleman from Florida who's writing a book about the construction of Bancroft Parkway. They came out, cleaned it up, beautified it. It looks pristine. They did an excellent job. I think that's it. The Wilmington Farmers Market's over there at Cool Springs Park. I came through there on my way to council tonight. It's a tremendous event. We need to support that. Jordan Sarah Taylor, Mary Kay Prado, love you. Thank you.
Ms. Dorsey Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that this weekend, the playoffs will be taking place for the Above the Rim Basketball League, and they will start at 10:00 at Parkway Academy Gym, which is the old St. Hedwicks Gym located at 1009 Sycamore Street. And they will start at 10:00 and they will end at 12:00. And Saturday's also my birthday, so I just want to point that out as well. And it is. And then Sunday's my husband, I mean, Monday's my husband, Sunday's his day. So also, I just really wanted to say thank you to Wilmington Police Department and the Fire Department for all their efforts in my district and throughout the city. But in particular, the vice has been doing a phenomenal job. There is a problem area in the Brown Town community, and they've really been on top of it. So I just wanted to say thank you publicly to them for that. And I also wanted to thank Councilman Namdi for a job, and congratulate him on a job well done today at William Hicks Anderson and Helen Chambers Park. It was a really nice event, and I enjoyed spending time with the young people. Thank you so much for a job well done, and congratulations to you. And that's it for me, Mr. President. I'm sorry.
Ms. Prado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also wanted to remind people about the Farmers Market at Cool Spring Park. It used to be called Cold Spring, but now it's called the Wilmington Farmers Market at Cool Spring Park. That's every Thursday, starting at 4:00 p.m. And sort of what Loretta was talking about earlier in that resolution related to Councilman Williams, just been informed that a home on the 1300 block of 4th Street for sex offenders wants to be opened up. I just found this out last night, so I'm very concerned about it. I'm going to explore it a little bit more, research it, and find out what's going on. But I could tell you the people in the Hilltop are very upset about this. I don't have any more details. I just know that the organization's called the 3D Group. Never heard of them, so I'm going to have to find out more about them. But with that, I'd like to yield some time to Councilwoman Cabrera, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Prado. I did want to, first of all, wish Senator Margaret Rose Henry, my political mother, happy birthday. Today is her birthday. And I also have to give a shout out to the Kansas City Monarchs, who have the Little League Division in the minors, part of the Wilmington Baseball League, for winning the championship on Saturday to Coach Scott and Coach Nelson and to all the parents. And I am one of the proud parents of one of the children on that team, little Vincent Alejandro Valdivieso. And I was also the team mom. And I will tell you that when the bases were loaded with only one out and we were only ahead by one point, I had them little boys doing yoga and meditation and relaxation exercises and imagery to see that they were going to hit that ball and win. And as they imagined it, it was done. Amen.
Ms. Vazquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to wish Senator Margaret Rose Henry a happy birthday. And many of the East Side residents, we had scheduled an East Side committee meeting last week, but we canceled it because of the storm. I want you to know that we will reschedule that. I know we're normally in our summer schedule, but I think it's essential for the things that are happening. There's a major economic development and revitalization plan with the blueprint on the East Side that's taking place, and it's essential that we get the East Side residents involved. So if any of you listening, look forward to getting a postcard, a flyer in your door about that meeting. We really need you to be at the table so that you can hear what's going on and get your input and working support. Also, Mr. President, I too have had the same difficulty as Councilwoman Walsh with my emails, so if I did not respond to some of your emails, please resend them to me. I think we finally got it straight. Mine's is straight that I can respond back to you, but I know I missed numerous emails. Also, Mr. President, there's an energy conservation program that's taking place over. It's kicking off tomorrow at the Neighborhood House in South Wilmington. It's a partnership between the Delaware Health and Social Service Department and the Neighborhood House and Our Youth, Inc. And they will go into some of the residents' homes and help fit them for energy proper LED bulbs and make sure some of the water fixtures are energy-equipped. So residents, you will be getting information in your door. Please be cooperative and take advantage of this energy-saving opportunity that's been awarded to South Wilmington. When the young people come knocking on your doors, please make appointments and participate. In fact, the kickoff for it is tomorrow with the youth at 2:00 p.m. and the parents that are involved. We're hiring 30 youth from the South Wilmington area. And so we need the parents to be at that meeting tomorrow at 6:00 at the Neighborhood House. Truly a great thing that's going on over in that area of the city. I also wanted to congratulate the Namdi. It was a beautiful event. I did the whole walk with him. I walked all the way around with him and the children, and they were very excited about the artwork that they did. I mean, to take an empty house and paint it to make it look like it was a beautiful home. They were very proud of their artwork. And the amazing part was to hear some of the poems that they wrote themselves. One girl wrote about the city and how she wished it was a nice, clean place for her to live, and she was working to help that. That was wonderful. And another young lady wrote about her father, which was very, very touching, very touching. So the Namdi doing great things with the children. And even through all the confusion that Councilman Brown talked about, you know, that was disheartening. But to see that still the children, still persevering for the sake of it all, and that we still was able to make a great day out of it. Mr. President, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department and for the South Bridge Flooding Mitigation Implementation Team. Everyone knows we've had major flooding in the South Wilmington area, and that was brought to the attention of the administration, and they pulled together this team. And I went to a meeting and I was very, very impressed with what was being done. And at first, I was like, okay, we're dragging a feet study after study. But then after we went on to see how many different peoples in the room, I just really appreciate their efforts. I found they've been meeting on a weekly basis, and I do appreciate their efforts to ensuring that we can resolve the flooding that's happening in the South Bridge and flowing almost into the East Side and Councilman Darius Brown's neighborhood as well. So we hoping that we can resolve the flooding that those neighborhoods will be experiencing no longer. Other than that, Mr. President, I wish everyone a great summer and Maddie Sue, Doc Kill, and Mommy, I love you. And also, Mr. Brown, ask for one minute of my time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. What I forgot to mention, Mr. President and council members, I'm going to ask council staff, would they please write a letter and invite the U.S. Attorney's Office to come to our next public safety meeting, if they can? Because I want one of the things to be discussed is what is happening with Operation Fed Up. These, here lately, you know, these felons get arrested with the guns. You don't hear that they go, they're part of the Operation Fed Up process, and they go straight over to the federal jail and straight into another state somewhere. They, you don't even hear that anymore. And I like to get an explanation from the horse's mouth if there is any, if the funds are ran out, if they just discontinued the program itself, because it was working. And not only that, there is talk of a neighborhood community court coming into our city and into the 3rd District, I believe. And if we can get with Councilman Darius Brown to give us the contacts, we'd like to have them also to come to our next public safety meeting to give us an update on where they are with the location and if there is one, and where they are as a whole in terms of bringing this to fruition for the 3rd District. And last but not least, I too want to, I forgot in my writing, Councilman Namdi, what a fine job you did through it all, through it all. When one door closes, another one will certainly open, and that's proof over there today. But I still stand by my words. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Darius Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a communication that I'd like to be read into the record.
June 20th, 2013, the Honorable Robert I. Marshall, dear State Senator Marshall, I am writing this letter in full support of Senate Bill 132, in which you are the primary sponsor. Senate Bill 132 has a tri-fold impact on education, employment, and sound communities for the state of Delaware. When passed, Senate Bill 132 will lend support to supplement unfunded capital projects that improve Delaware's educational system and its infrastructures and establish the Delaware Works Trust Fund.
I'd like this communication to be received, recorded, and filed.
Poles and favors, and note by saying aye.
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 Thank you, aye. Mr. President, in our General Assembly, because of the schedule that we have with the General Assembly ending at the end of June, we weren't able to prepare a resolution for this, but I wanted to make sure that we had this in our council record and this letter will be sent down to Senator Marshall as he presents this piece of legislation before the Delaware General Assembly. I have the privilege of serving as a member of Building America's Future, which is a bipartisan group of elected officials around the country to encourage our federal government, our state government, and local municipalities to invest in infrastructure. And with this piece of legislation, SB 132, Senator Marshall is working to establish the Delaware Works Trust Fund, which will enable some job opportunity and also provide capital dollars throughout our state for infrastructure investment. In addition to that, Mr. President, I'd like to thank the residents of the city of Wilmington that came out for last night's community court meeting. The community court is a citywide court, and so the conversation has been to locate the court in the 3rd District within the prices-run census tract. So that's the reasoning for it being in the 3rd District, because of the prices-run census tract. And so there were about 60 individuals that came out to last night's meeting. I want to thank them. This was our second meeting, and the interest continues to grow. And I'm hopeful in the upcoming public safety meeting, we'll have even more information about how this community court is being developed and implemented. In addition to that, I want to congratulate Mr. Bernie Wilkins for another year of the Juneteenth celebration, the pageant that was last Friday and the celebration last evening. He does a great job with the Juneteenth program, which I believe is in its 18th year. I may be misstating the year, but there are 42 states that celebrate Juneteenth, and Mr. Bernie started Delaware's recognition of Juneteenth, and we were the 3rd state in the country to begin that celebration. The 3rd District has the benefit of being the birthplace and the home to many great people that have contributed to the city of Wilmington. And one of the 3rd District's favorite sons, and favorite son of the city of Wilmington, is Clifford Brown. Clifford Brown, his home and memorial is in the 3rd District where he resided in the 1000 block of Clifford Brown Walk. You can find a garden that's named in his honor at 15th and Clifford Brown, and also a statue of him that is located in the Kirkwood Street Park. And so this week, as we celebrate the silver anniversary, 25 years of the Clifford Brown Jazz Festival, I just wanted to comment on the history that is in the 3rd District and highlight what Clifford Brown, even though he left this earth early, young in age, the legacy, the rich legacy he's left here in the city of Wilmington for so many years. Would like to ask the residents of the 3rd District, if you're still looking for locations for your children for summer school, that our Neighborhood Community Centers are still enrolling students for summer school, not summer school, summer camp. And so you can visit the Walnut Street YMCA, Kingswood Community Center, and Brown Boys and Girls Club, which are all community centers in the 3rd District that are still enrolling for summer camp. And then lastly, Mr. President, would just like to thank the Department of Public Works and the new commissioner, Mr. Cleon Colley, and welcoming him to the city of Wilmington, and thank them for many of the constituent issues even before Mr. Colley, that they have worked with me over these last six months to address. And I greatly appreciate them being able to do this and their turnaround time on them. And I greatly appreciate them being able to do this and their turnaround time on them. You know, dealing with constituents, the turnaround, turnaround time is of the utmost importance and so I greatly appreciate that. And even for some of the residents since Mr. Colley has come in the last two weeks are appreciating, are appreciating their trash pickup. So I want to thank Mr. Colley and those in the Public Works Department for some areas in our, in the third district that were having their trash picked up at around noon in the last two weeks. They've had it picked up between eight-thirty and nine-fifteen and so they're great, they're definitely appreciative of that and not having their trash sitting on the street, particularly in these hot summer months till noon. And with that, Mr. President, nothing else tonight.
Mr. Congo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everyone who came out last Wednesday and was a part of the Education, Youth, and Families Committee meeting with the Christina School District came and updated us on their progress and trying to improve their disciplinary policies, especially towards our minorities. It was a very passionate meeting. I learned a lot, hopefully the council members who were present and those who, from the public who are here and the public watching, learned a lot. Just want to encourage us all that we have to, remind us all that we have to continue to keep our eye on, on the district to make sure they do right by the children. If anyone didn't get a chance to see that meeting, I would definitely encourage you to go to WITN.org so that you can see it for yourself. Also happy to announce that the renovation for the twenty-third and Tatlin Street, twenty-fourth and Tatlin Street Park is gonna start hopefully next month and it should be done by August or early September. It's gonna have all new fencing, brand-new basketball courts, playground equipment, sprinkler system. I want to thank the residents for their input and also the second district planning council for their effort in making that happen. It's been a long time coming, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. I just want to remind everyone to continue to send in their requests for scholarships, for college. You can call City Council at five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. Once again, that number is five-seven-six-two-one-fourty for more information. Also want to remind everyone that I do, that I do have five thousand dollars set aside that I was able to raise last March that I'm gonna specify just for the second district in, you know, in addition to the money that, that we have on council. So again, that number is five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. I, I want to thank the organizers that had the father-and-son basketball two-on-two tournament last Saturday at Stubbs School and we had a great time. I think I saw Darius out there watching me do my thing.
You did alright. You did alright. You and Max did alright.
Yeah, we, I played in with my son Max. We lost, we won the first game, then we lost the second too, but it was just out there to, we were just out there to have a great time. I want to thank the organizers. It was, it was, it was a fun time. I want to thank United Away. I think they had several volunteers there helping to keep everything running smoothly and also look forward to working with them. They're trying to, to find one hundred male mentors right here from the city to, to, to help with their mentoring program over at United Away. And if you have any questions about that, you can call me on my cell phone at two-one-eight-eight-six-three-zero. Once again, my number is two-one-eight-eighty-six-thirty. Thanks a lot, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Yes, the Christina School District, at the end of the hearing that we had here, I approached them and said that we would like for them to come back in September for an update. But they said, no, we don't want to come back in September. We want to come back in August. Because they're saying by the end of August, they're gonna have a lot of mile, or the projected milestones met. So Superintendent Dr. Wills and his group will be coming back that last week in August for an update on the public hearing. They filled in a lot of tough questions. They're in a difficult situation, but we're hopeful and prayer for that they're going to do the best job that they can to correct the situation that they in part inherited it. They all, they in part inherited this situation. So they want to come back and we're gonna have a date at the end of August. Mr. Chukwuchu.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things. One, I would just like to acknowledge that on, on Monday, of course, we had a, a quick storm fly through our city and it wreaked a lot of havoc over in, in the first district. We had many falling trees, a few cars were, were hit as well as a, a home was hit. And thankfully that there were no, no injuries and I know one family was displaced, but it could have been a whole lot worse because the first district has a lofty amount of trees over there. So just, just thankful that it wasn't worse. But would like to begin by just thanking the, the mayor. The mayor was out with his, his team as part of the first responders, just assessing the damage that was done and really comforting residents. So I, I thank him for being there and a lot, Chief, Chief Dunning and Chief, Chief Good from the Fire Department were out, as well as the other contractors that they had helping to clear the streets for, with the trees and the commissioner, as well as the department and staff from the Public Works. So I'd just like to thank them for, for that work that was done this week. We had some, some residents, including myself, were, were out of power for, for almost twenty-six hours, but they worked hard even in rain to get it back on. So it was a very, very troubling time for, for, for the first district, but we, we made it through it and then glad that, for the city's support really helping out. Next, I'd like to, this coming Saturday, the Mas Thirty-Five located at Twenty-Eighth and Washington Street is having their Founder's Day event. Starts at six o'clock. Tickets are fifteen dollars and it's a support for, for their organization. Next Saturday, June the twenty-ninth, the Wilmington Peacekeepers and LJ's Playpen are sponsoring our Safe Summer Kids Event for Peace to kick off the summer. That event's gonna be held in the Price's Park. And as, there are also many phenomenal camps, some are already underway throughout the first district. We have the Pals having a camp along LJ's Playpen Beacon of Hope and many of the, the spiritual institutions without, within the first district are having Bible, Bible study camps. And Mr. Vincent and his staff from over at Harlan are having supports and enrichment activities for kids and field trips at, at Harlan Elementary School throughout the summer as well. And also, as was mentioned, I'd like to commend the Education and Youth and Families Chair, Councilman Congo and yourself for that, the meeting last week with Christina School District. I think it was a, a great start for us to begin to create that dialogue and I just would encourage us to realize first and foremost that, that Christina School District, they, they may have been the ones who were, were brought to, to the table by the, by the Office of Civil Rights, but I mean, they are not, you know, in, in, in any way distinct from any of the other districts. So I, I think that we should also try to create that dialogue and bring the other districts to the table because the only way we can begin to address these, these, this array of issues that, that surrounds the, the education of our children in Wilmington is, is to have open and honest dialogue. So I think that was a great start and I, I would just be hopeful that we can begin to bring the other districts in as, as well. And, and lastly, just like to, to thank, as many of the colleagues, my colleagues have mentioned yourself and everyone who came out today to support the, the, our event for the, the children throughout the, the city. We're hoping to take it citywide, but there's a lot over in, in the western city area and we, we did a, a couple houses over in the first district where we're painting the, the vacants and it's a project called Creative, Creative Places where we're use, use art to transform our community. So we had the youth involved with that project as, as well as the poets who were mentioned. So I, I'd just like to take a second to, to thank a few individuals who helped support and make the event happen today despite the, a lot of the chaos that was going on. One of the community officers, Corporal Metzner, was, was there. He, he came out and supported us for, for that event as well as his sergeant, Sergeant Bozeman, and Chief Good from the Fire Department to, to help us get that e- event underway today. And again, we'd just like to thank my colleagues for, for their support. It, it was a very challenging and, and to, to say the least and, and, you know, I, I'm emotional and I'm that type person and, and I, I, I know in my heart what I do, I, I do, I'm doing it for the right reason. And, and I just felt very, very slighted by, by a lot of the things that were happening today. I felt they, they were unjust, it, it was unneeded aggravation. And, and when you think of, of what our city needs to move forward, it, it is the, the exact opposite of, of what took place today. And, and I just hope we can begin to, to look forward towards solutions and, and understanding what we need to do for, for our communities. As was mentioned, that this, this community is in need and to have so many individuals from, from outside nonprofits and other organizations come into this community to, to give out information and, and organizations willing to provide services and food and to have all of that just, just, you know, mixed around and toyed with. I, I think it was very disheartening, not, not only for all those who, who worked together to bring the event together and the vendors, the volunteers, but most importantly, as was mentioned, for, for the children. They worked very hard in, in, in creating our installations as well as preparing their, their poetry. I, I would like to thank all of the, the poets who did present and my son Osenachi, I dragged him with me here today, but he was one of the poets. He, he read a poem and he also, you know, Councilwoman Cabrera mentioned her son and they were victorious in the Wilmington Little League Championship Game and my son played for the Pittsburgh Crawlers and they were, came in second place. And I just would like to acknowledge Osenachi there in the final inning, there was a big pop fly and my son did catch the ball. So I'm, I'm very, and he made, he said that, make sure you tell him I caught the ball. So I'd like just to say that and, and, and on that note and would just like to, again, thank you for, for your leadership and for all of my, my fellow colleagues there. They're important. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be a Finance Committee meeting on Monday and a special City Council meeting on Thursday with respect to Agenda Item Thirty-eight, Thirty-seven. So we'll be meeting next Thursday and we'll be in committee next, next Monday. A press release went out and you can read the press release, explains what we as City Council kind of unilaterally are trying to do and I think is, is a good thing for us to do. So you can look at those things. Also, City Council, you got a, an email outlining the process for selecting the public, the TPO that's gonna operate the public and least access, access channel. I want you to read that. You'll see there's a lot of time in there for you to participate and have input and comment, but if you want to tweak it in some way, just let me know and we will process that to see if we can incorporate what you want incorporated. But read it and if there's some question or lack of clarity, you can see myself with John Rago. But we wanted to be inclusive because it's our project and I think we've set up a very comprehensive and kind of redundant systems to get this done. I, I, I'm hesitant to speak about what I experienced at Hicks Anderson. I'm, I'm severely hesitant to speak. It seems that, I don't know what the pattern is. There's a pattern that's developing in terms of those council persons or neighborhoods to get some of the ancillary kinds of personal things that are unique to them and what they want to do. Not core. Everyone is getting the core things done because you have to get the core things done. But there, there are some things that's personal to council persons' projects that they have that, that are not being done. As a pattern thus far, I don't know if that's gonna be a permanent pattern, or pattern or long-term pattern, but I guess as me, who I am as the leader and what I need to do, we, we will address that. We're gonna address it through dialogue and more dialogue and more dialogue to try to get it fixed, to try to get it fixed. And of course, there are other tools that one can use in this regard. I, I don't want to say too much because I'm in this peace mode. Can we all just get along? And that's what I'm gonna try to do, but there's a big arsenal that one can use to deal with situations. I, I just want to make that known. I would be remiss if I didn't say that with Brother Chukwuchu sitting there. And you gotta remember that, as President, all the information comes through you. So there's a pattern beyond Mr. Wills, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Chukwuchu. There's a pattern beyond them that comes across my desk. And, you know, we got three and a half years, you know, you know, we have three and a half years to get along. We have three and a half years to represent the people in this city. I hear folks say they didn't sign up for this. You know, I really didn't sign up for this either. But we have three and a half years, but you know, there's a challenge. You always, you step up to the challenge. You just gotta step up to it. So, so I'm up to the challenge, but we'll figure it out. We will figure it out. And at the end of the day, my prayer and hope is that we get along, we just get along. And not to agree to disagree and not vet and scrutinize things in terms of whether it's best for the city of Wilmington, but we do it for the right reason. We do it for the right reason. But there's a distinction between ancillary, personal projects and core projects. You clean up the, the leaves and the trees, that's good. That's core. You're supposed to do that. But when you, when you, when you, when you say, give me something for my park or a night out under the stars and stuff, you know, that's ancillary. But I don't know what the end pattern is gonna be. I don't know what the end pattern is gonna be. I'm just compelled to say that, not to be contentious, but in, in the spirit of peace, in the spirit of peace. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Entertain most into adjournment.